Good morning. It is Wednesday, February 26, 2014, and we're in the Commissioner's Boardroom, 1115 Commercial Street Northeast in Salem for our weekly Board of Commissioners meeting. We start our meeting with a pledge of allegiance, so please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let me make it on the right.
Your Chair.
All right. We'll get started with our meeting this morning. Several long consent calendar. Nobody's signed up to... No, no one signed up to speak under public comment. Started to and then erased it. So let's move to that consent calendar, I think, Commissioner Miller.
Yes. So Mr. Chair, I'd move approval of the consent calendar and included on it this morning, or in it is, under Business Services, Human Resources. Approve recommendation to uphold the pay ranges of the following classifications: Environmental Health Specialist 2, Mental Health Specialist 1, Mental Health Specialist 2, Drug Treatment Case Manager and Licensed Practical Nurse. Approve recommendation to increase the pay ranges of the following classifications: Engineering Technician 1, Engineering Technician 2, Senior Engineering Technician, Environmental Health Specialist 3, Mental Health Specialist 3, Mental Health Associate, Drug Treatment Associate 1, Dog Control Officer, Senior Office Manager, Office Manager, Juvenile Director, Under Sheriff, Deputy County Administrative Officer, and Case Aid. Approve recommendation to establish new classification of Personal Property Appraisal Technician Trainee. Approve recommendation to establish new classification of Care Coordinator Trainee. Approve recommendation to establish new classification of Care Coordinator. Approve recommendation to establish new classification of Senior Catographer G.I.S. Technician. Public Works approve the annual road assessment dedication report for 2013. Public Works planning schedule adoption of an administrative ordinance for March 5, 2014, Number La 14-001, amendments to the Marion County Urban and Rural Zone Codes. Approve an order appointing Richard Massey and Scott Anderson to the Marion County Planning Commission with terms expiring February 26, 2018. And the Sheriff's Office approve amendment number one to extend the contract term with Consolidated Food Management until June 30, 2014. Approve amendment number one to extend the contract term with Keefe Commissary Network LLC until June 30, 2014.
I'll second the motion.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to approve. The consent calendar is just read and presented. Is there any further discussion? Hearing that all in favor, then say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Two action items this morning. The first has to do with Courthouse Square. We consider approval of amendment number five that adds $35,000 to a contract with Train of Oregon to complete control, support, and necessary mechanical repairs to the HVAC system as part of the Courthouse Square remediation project. Peggy Mitchell has rushed forward, so she must want to tell us, and John Latimer, whoever would like to begin.
Well, I'll start and then let Peggy give you the real story. You know, it's always interesting when you do something like remediation of a building and you get into old systems, particularly HVAC systems. You remember the problems we had with courthouse. Well, this was not near as bad as the courthouse. But several things we found, and it's really not an old system, but it's old enough for things to go bump in the night. And on top of that, of course, SPS was changing a lot of the pillars and the HVAC system had to be moved. So we were finding issues with a lot of the communication controls and operational components of the system, even to the point of one of the, what do you call them, the air conditioning, heating systems on the roof. It appears that one of them was put in as a, it was leading edge, or we might say bleeding edge, equipment by Train. And the control mechanism in that system was, the people who could adjust it are gone.
No longer with us.
No longer with us. So they didn't have anybody that could actually adjust that system. So we're having to change out that system. And on top of that, when it was built, there was no filter put in in front of the coils. So they were extremely dirty. So we're going to eventually have to fix that. That's not part of this, but eventually we'll come back to you with, because they're going to have to put in a system to keep those coils from getting dirty. And then, of course, within the building, we had an organization called New Dorfer come in to balance the system, because you want it balanced when we go back in, so everybody is the right temperature in all of the offices. And they found some problems with what they call fan-powered boxes. Those are the boxes that move the air around in the building. They even have heat strips in them and a variety of other components. And so we had those, some of those went bad, so we've got to change those out. So what you find here today is, in addition to the contract with Train, to do all of those repairs and fix all the things that New Dorfer found that was wrong with the system. SPS pays for some of it, because they created some of the problems when they were taking the boxes down. And then we're paying for those that are issues in the equipment due to age. So Peggy, anything else we need to... Oh, might want to know how much money we're adding. We started out with a contract with Train to fix this and started out at about $82,000, and so now it's running up over $100,000, $117,000. And so that's why we're here today. Peggy, you have anything else?
Well, I'll just start out. The original contract, we started back in November of last year, when we knew there were some minor issues that needed to be done. And then, as you can see, this is our fifth amendment to this contract. So as we moved along, one of the major repairs in amendment two or three was doing the work on both AC units, one and three, I believe, had some major work, that we were finding issues with the communication. The system just wasn't online. And so there were probably $20,000, $30,000 that went into this original contract in order to do those major repairs to those two units. And then, as John mentioned, we added a control system, which went into amendment number four, and that will allow better access for us in the future to be able to go and know what is wrong with the system. As John indicated, the control systems on AC 1 through 3 gave us that ability to go in and read. It was just AC 4 that had an unusual control system to it, which none of us were really aware of at the time. And so we've added the controls. The $35,000 that we're adding on this amendment is allowing Train to come in and support New Dorfer Engineering, our third-party engineering firm that's doing the balancing. So as he's going through, he's identifying there may be, as John said, a fan-powered box that has a heat strip that's out. So it's more of a minor repair and not a full replacement of these units. But as he discovers things, the balancer is identifying whether it's an engineering issue, a controls issue, or a mechanical issue. And so we're hoping that this extra $35,000 will get us through to the end. We're down, I believe, on the first floor with our balancing, and then we'll come back and just do an overall systems balancing. So by the time we get to the first floor, we should have identified all of the deficiencies within that system, and this amount of money then should allow Train to come in and finish those repairs.
Mr. Chair, we've learned a lot more about HVAC systems than I ever thought I'd ever want to know. One of the interesting things was they, somehow, when they were moving things around, they pulled some tubes out. I forget what they call those, those pressure tubes. Anyway, the engineers said that if it wasn't connected right, you could blow out the windows. So we thought it was probably a good idea to fix that.
Fine. Where do we start, anybody?
The questions I had have been answered, so thank you very much for that detail of what's been added and why the increase. That's what I wanted to know.
I do have one question. So you mentioned, well, I'm reading through, actually, on the amendment, these notes that the contractor put in about the problems that they were finding in cleaning the coils and that they were still dirty and having to clean them again. So you mentioned that the filters or whatever aren't part of this. So can there be an air quality problem if those are build-up dirt like that? And are we going to deal with that in the future, or what's the issue there?
Well, AC 4 is where the problem is, and it really takes air out of the building.
So it's not pushing?
But what it was doing, there were no, there were filters on all of the vents in the building, except for the bathrooms.
Okay.
So that was taking all that air out of the bathrooms through this AC 4, where there was no filters. And there are coils in there. It's part of the lead process, because they have these, it reheats the air, I think?
Yes, there's an air reheater in it. And AC 4's purpose really was the exhaust component in pulling the air out. And that was the major one that we had the big issues on as they were coming through in balancing. But I would suspect that once we get all the air balanced, and I'll kind of look over at Mina, who's sitting here, that will probably be something that we'll put on our list to do a check before we move back in, one of those add-on contracts that we might look at of just doing an air quality check once we get back in the building.
So they don't need to have filters on them?
Well, they do. But we don't have, what we want to do is put it on with a separate contract. That way, we don't have to pay markup to SPS.
Right. So another one was their protection over the AC 4 unit up on the roof, is the engineer's recommendation of what we should do for that. And when, in order for them to get to the coil to clean it out on AC 4, they had to, they actually had to cut into the plenum and into the system to get access to it. It was entirely closed, from what we understand, so.
Just to make sure I understand the answer to my question. So it is still a problem. It's not in this contract. Once we get through this process we're talking about with this contract, it will probably be a separate contract, and will it be done prior to us moving in then? So in case they do have issues getting in there to install it?
It's going to be installed on the roof.
Oh, so it's on the roof.
It's on the roof. So that's not a problem. I doubt that we'll have it completely finished by the time we get back in. But part of the process is going to be re-cleaning the coil again and then putting in the filters.
So, but it is on the list of something to do imminently?
Right.
Correct. All right. So I will then move approval of amendment number five to add $35,000 to a contract with Train of Oregon to complete control, support, and necessary mechanical repairs to the HVAC system as part of the Courthouse Square remediation project.
I'll second the motion.
All right. It's movement seconded. Approve amendment number five, adding $35,000 to the Train contract on Courthouse Square. Any further discussion? Hearing that all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Be nice to have heat.
Thank you.
And cooling. I've been not wanting...
And have them function properly. That's the key.
I've been not wanting to tell the story, but one of the biggest fights I had at home is we put in a new furnace and it showed up with a computer thermostat. No. I just want it to put the temperature you want, not tell me when I can come down and be comfortable. Anyway, now you know. All right. Our next item is under Business Services. Consider ratification of Federation of Oregon Parole and Probation Officers collective bargaining agreement effective July 1, 2013 through June 30, 2015. Mina Hansen and Under Sheriff Troy Clausen. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner.
And go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioner.
So we always, one of the things I think is important to point out is, we always start negotiation of these contracts before they expire, but sometimes the bargaining process takes us beyond the expiration date. So this association's contract did expire in June 30 of last year. We worked very hard to try and come to an agreement. We have some just very minor housekeeping changes throughout the contract. I believe all the commissioners were provided a red line copy ahead of this meeting. The largest component of this is, we have held fast on not giving a COLA to this group and instead have negotiated to pay their PERS pickup. And in order to bring them into market, we needed to have somewhere between a 5 and 6% increase. By providing the PERS pickup, we actually pay less for the increase than we would have if we had done it as COLA or wages. The PERS pickup obviously is done as a pre-tax, so there's some savings to the county in taxes and associated payroll tax by putting it in as a PERS pickup. You'll also find in your packet that PERS has required, we learned, that there be an order from the board saying that you want to do the PERS pickup, so you're going to see both the contract for ratification and that order that PERS is requiring. There were some changes that were negotiated between the Department, the Sheriff's Office, and the union with regard to the complaint investigation process. We didn't feel that there was, what they were asking for was any particular difficulty for us to implement.
Correct. There were no real significant changes. It was basically bringing the complaint process that we use for both the Marion County Law Enforcement Association and the Federation of Parole and Probation Officers closer together. Prior to this, our investigative processes, when we received citizens' complaints, were vastly different, and we wanted to try to mirror those a little closer, so that we were treating our employees equally with regard to those types of situations.
The other item that I will note is that we are holding steady on the health insurance cap for this bargaining period. They did not get an increase to their cap. We believe that's fair and equitable, given that they already have the highest cap for a HISC Plan Committee, which stands for the Health Insurance Study Committee Groups. That our premiums have been flat for the last several years, so we're well under their cap, so there was no need to increase it. So we did hold fast on the cap this year. Is there any specific questions?
Just a comment. Thank you for bringing it forward. Thank you for providing the red line copy in advance. Do really appreciate that. So I'm glad we were able to reach an agreement that everyone is happy with, and just wanted to say that all of our Marion County employees do wonderful job. This group of employees in particular are responsible for an area that I've been working on, which is the reentry initiative and getting those great outcomes that I always talk about, which is reduced recidivism and people having, moving forward in a positive way. And so I just want to thank these employees for the work that they do for Marion County and glad that we've gotten through this contract.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion, but I first also wanted to, it sounds a little funny to say that everybody's happy with the contract. These negotiations are very, very difficult, and it takes a lot of hard work and time and energy. So I very much appreciate it, and that we have an agreement is good news. So that's great, and thank you for your work on that. And yes, I too want to extend my appreciation to all the people in this, in this unit, the parole and probation officers. It's a job I could not do, so they're wonderful, and now everybody can get back to work, right? That's the idea. So if there aren't any other questions, or if there are any questions, I would move that we ratify, excuse me, that we do approve the ratification of the Federation of Oregon Parole and Probation Officers collective bargaining agreement effective July 1, 2013 through June 30, 2015. So clearly, this is retroactive, but that happens in these negotiations.
And I'll second the motion. Does that include the approval of the resolution also that was, it's not listed as such on the agenda, but that was part of the...
The, yes, it would. The resolution...
Accompany the contract.
Takes care of what my motion was, for clarification, yes.
All right. So I will second that motion.
All right. It's movement seconded that we approve the Federation of Oregon Parole and Probations collective bargaining agreement as just described in the form of a resolution that's here in front of us. Any further discussion?
Because it's not in the form of a resolution, so it's a separate resolution, so we're approving the contract.
And the?
And the resolution.
All right. And the. So we're all clear?
Clear.
All right. Good. Any further discussion? Now, call a question all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, and thank you, and thanks for all your work on this.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Well, that's a problem. We're done a little bit ahead of time for a public hearing set for 9:30. So is there something you'd like to talk about, or would you suggest we stop for seven minutes?
Take a quick break.
All right. Let's do that, then we'll reconvene at 9:30. Thank you. We're back to continue our February 26 board meeting. Our item next time is a public hearing scheduled for 9:30, and we've reached that time. It has to do with the East Salem Service District. Public hearing is the governing body of the East Salem Service District to consider approval of an order for the formation of the Durbin-Glenwood Street Lighting District. Alan Haley.
Thank you, Commissioner, members of the board. Mr. Norris, do we need to open up an East Salem Service District meeting first?
Yes. The board is convening as the governing body for the East Salem Service District, so the board would first open a meeting of the East Salem Service District in order to conduct the hearing.
All right.
Great. So I'd ask at this point to go ahead and open up a special meeting for the East Salem Service District, and then we'll open up the public hearing.
All right. Then I'll try. I'll try to declare that the East Salem Service District meeting is open. Is that satisfactory?
Good.
Anybody concerned? All right, Alan.
We're here today to consider a public hearing for the formation of the Glenwood-Durbin Lighting District. This is a lighting district that's, has a petitioner who has received more than 80% of the signatures required of the 131 members of the, that would be of the district. The cost for the district at this point would be $14.80 annually, or roughly $1.23 per property per month. So we have found throughout East Salem that we have now about 130 lighting districts, and we generally like to see these. We find them to be a form of safety for the neighborhoods. In this particular case, this is the first of what will be several that will be coming to you from the petitioners who are engaging in, basically, lighting up East Salem across the board. Most of our lighting districts are made up of anywhere from, the smallest, I think we have, is three people. Some of our larger ones are more in the neighborhood of 40 to 45 members. Again, this is a lighting district made up of 131 residences. And it's, again, looking at doing another three or four of these to light up East Salem. So the district supports these lighting districts, and at this point, I'll open it up for questions and testimony and come back with you with our recommendation.
Other questions? I just have one, if you'd pull the mic a little closer when you talk.
Sure.
But I am not sure I heard it just correctly, so it's, you made it sound like it's $14.80 for the district. That's per household, is that correct?
Per household, I'm sorry.
Yes. I just didn't hear that part. I knew that had to be.
Yes.
All right. Any other questions? All right.
Just if I could, just a process question. So we did meet as the East Salem Service District and had a discussion about this before, right?
That is correct.
So, and we had, and we had people that came and talked about it. So this is just formalizing the discussion that we already had, is that correct?
Correct. You passed an order to okay this hearing to be held in January.
Right.
And we're here today to do that.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
All right. I don't hear any other questions. We have a number of people signed up that would like to speak. I'll read them off and ask you to come up as they were written, excuse me, written down, but if you would, come, microphone close to your face, and give your name and address, and then go ahead and tell us what you'd like. And the first is Jerry Wymer.
There's no comment.
Oh, no comment? Okay. Michael Johnson.
It is nice to see you once again. When we're talking about lighting up East Salem, oh, Michael Johnson. I represent the East Salem Suburban Neighborhood Association. We had people who came to us and said, "We want to light our neighborhood. We're tired of being robbed. We want at least the crooks to see who they're dealing with." May not have been said in exactly those words, but this is one of the petition books for the lighting that we were proposing to do from Sinus Street South to Monkers, extending out McLeve Road to about the 4900 block. There's going to be eight of these districts somewhere in the neighborhood of 1,200 households to be lit. These houses were built back in the 1940s and 50s. They're spotty street lighting only because people want them in their yards. The Sheriff's Office has told us that street lighting does two things immediately. One is it makes the road safer, and two, it drives down crime. And I don't know if Barb Skidmore, she is one of the chief petitioners. I don't know if she's here yet. When they went out and began knocking on doors, the first 12 people they visited all said, "Oh, give me the book. I'll sign." We have been thieved and robbed, and they were just stunned that every one of them were saying the same thing. Glenwood Drive is probably the darkest street in Salem. There are, there may be, there are lights at the west end, but there are no lights in the 41 to 4400 block, and it is dark at night. And then we, in all the door-knocking that it took, we got 80% of the people to sign. They, most of them couldn't wait. The other thing they asked for, and I realize we're not here to talk about that today, but we'll talk about that soon in the future, they said, "Please, now that we get lights, can we have sidewalks and curbs?" And that's going to be one of our next discussions, but that's not for today. I urge you to adopt this district so that we can have PGE get about it. And by the way, I don't know if the cookies are for us, but in this summer, when the lights go on, there's going to be a lighting party. And we're going to invite you to come, and the neighborhood too. You have any questions for me?
No. Thank you, Michael. Go ahead.
Just thank you for all the work that you've put into this, and this really is a great thing that's happening, and finally, huh?
Well, one of the things, one of the comments that was made when we met the first time was that this was 131 households, and Alan's comment was, "This is a lighting city." We said, "Gee, this is one of the small ones." With 1,200 homes, we have a lot of work to do. Thank you.
All right. Next, Miriam Johnson.
No comment.
All right. Thank you. And I'm sorry I'll do this way wrong, but I'll say Willis Meisen something.
Is it Heimer?
Is it Heimer? Well, I know that name, but it, oh, it didn't look like it. But anyway, if you'd like to...
No comment.
No comment. Thank you. And Thomas Johnson?
No.
All right, and that's all the testimony then. Anybody else that didn't sign up that would like an opportunity? All right, Alan, any final comments?
I must excuse myself, it's, I didn't identify myself to start with. It's Alan Haley, I'm District Secretary for East Salem Service District. The only other comment we have, I think, is that, um, this has been a proven thing, uh, as far as lighting and safety that Mr. Johnson mentioned, um, and from the service district perspective, we would recommend that you, uh, close the public hearing and approve the formation of Glenwood-Durbin Lighting District, as requested.
So, Mr. Chair, if there are no further comments, I will do just that. I will move that the board, um, of the, uh, East Salem Service District close this public hearing, and that we approve the order that forms the Durbin-Glenwood Street Lighting District.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, so movement's second to close public hearing and approve the East Salem Service District, Durbin-Glenwood Light, Street Lighting District, excuse me. Any further discussion?
Just to add my, uh, thanks to everyone who went out and knocked on doors and got petitions signed, and, uh, worked really hard to organize this, so it's a good day.
All right, anything else? Call a question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, and thank you all too for, for all your work, and now I'll close the meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Of the East Salem Service District. All right, that's the end of some things here this morning. Normally, we have presentations at the beginning of a meeting. We're going to have one at the end, and just for flow, I'd like to change our order a little bit and read the places where we'll be together in the coming week before we get into that presentation. So if I could, uh, start with this afternoon, the 26th of February, 2:30 to 3:30, a one-on-one department head elected officials meeting with Walt Begla, District Attorney, in the Columbia River Conference Room, 451 Division Street Northeast in Salem. That's followed at 3:45 with a one-on-one, uh, department head elected officials meeting with Gloria Roy, Legal Counsel, Columbia River Conference Room. Tomorrow, 3 o'clock to 6 o'clock, Marion County Compensation Board Meeting in the Marion County HR Training Room, second floor, room 201, 325 Thirteenth Street Northeast in Salem. Friday, the 28th, 7:30 to 10, Job Growers Board and Willamette Jobs Council Meeting in the Chameca Center for Business and Industry, room 203, 626 High Street in Salem. Next Monday is our Management Update, a meeting where we talk about current issues with the county. It's in the Columbia and Saniam Conference Room, 451 Division Street in Salem. That's followed at 11 o'clock on a work session having to do with the lottery fund budget, and that'll be in the Columbia River Conference Room. Tuesday, the 4th, 9:30 to 11:30, Budget Committee Meeting, Commissioners Board Room, 1115 Commercial Street Northeast in Salem. That's followed by, at 1 o'clock, a one-on-one department head elected officials meeting with Jeff White, Finance Department, Columbia River Conference Room. Next would be at 2:15 to 3:15, one-on-one department head elected officials meeting with Ida Salazar, Information Technology. And then at 4 o'clock, a one-on-one department head meeting with Rod Cockens, the Health Department. Next Wednesday at 9 o'clock is our next board session, and then, uh, after that, we have a Marion County Woodburn Meeting at a location to be announced at noon on Wednesday, the 5th. So that's all those places. Any other comments before we get to the presentation? Then let me get just a little bit more organized. Maybe that's impossible. The, uh, reason, the presentation has to do with a person named Troy Thompson. He had imparted a inspiration to all who knew him. He's passionate, embraced a spirit of giving, had a commitment to life that lives on in those he touched. The Troy Thompson Humanitarian Award is given to any Marion County employee that meets the criteria and standards set by Troy Thompson. So it was, the award was created to honor persons who are making significant contributions to the community with their time, actions, and dedication. The award was originally developed to commemorate, to commemorate the life of Troy Thompson. So, I think the way we'll do this, I don't know quite how I want to do it. It's all fun, and it's all good. Uh, I have rather a long thing to read, and I guess I could read it and then just ask that the people involved come up, and then we have a number of items, a plaque, a book that to present, and then a, a bit of a reception, so... Well, I'll just start reading and see what happens. Troy Thompson Award. Julia Alpernis from the Finance Department. Julia has a strong passion and willingness to give her time and abilities to improve people's lives. I feel like you ought to be up here, kind of. No, you know what we'll do? Mark, uh, Mark, just have the camera stay on her as I read. That's, that's all I want, thank you. Let me get back to this good stuff. Passion and willingness to give her time and abilities to improve people's, people's lives, particularly in the area of women's health and breast cancer awareness and fundraising. She tirelessly works for the betterment of others with no expectation of recognition or praise. For all the organizations she supports, people have come to rely on her as the go-to person because of her dedication. She works quietly in the background to further their cause and discover ways to improve the organization's efficiency, and provides the glue that enables them to continue moving forward to benefit others. Perhaps you'd read the next paragraph.
Specifically, Julia has had an active role in supporting the United Way campaign for Marion County. She has been a vital team member in the overall campaign coordination and has assisted the county in raising over seventy-nine thousand dollars in the last three years. Asking for monetary donations and motivating staff members to ask others for donations can be difficult, but Julia has such a strong willingness and desire to help her community, she makes everyone feel good about their contributions. Julia has been a constant, year after year, in her steadfast involvement. When the county needs someone willing to step up to the fundraising plate for these causes, they can always count on Julia as she comes forward with enthusiasm and a smile on her face.
Julia seems to always be a willing volunteer for anything that needs to be done, and she seems to enjoy her efforts in helping others. She continues to lead the Marion County United Way efforts along with her work outside the county toward cancer awareness and fundraising. Recently, she was asked to be a county, be, by a county employee to serve on another committee to help make fund, funding distribution decisions regarding federal grant money. While she has not been formally approved for that committee, her response was the same as always. If it will help, then she's willing to make the time to volunteer. That was from Jeff White. So, congratulations. And if I, if I could add, Julia takes care in our, on the fourth, uh, the, excuse me, the second floor there, uh, the water club, and she's always on top of that. Even the little things, she's very good at taking care of.
I think it's time for this. Now, Julie, if you'll meet us right in front, we'll get some pictures and give you your loot.
They told it was for Aaron.
And I love Aaron. It's a little light, too. It's for the God.
A little light.
All right, Julie, congratulations, and thank you. Well, I can just, Marilyn Thompson, and we'll get down, has written a book, and I'd like to, it's called Live a Legacy, Leave a Legacy, about Troy Thompson. She couldn't be here today because she's ill, but she wanted you to have it, and I have not read it myself, but I'm, I'm hearing it'll make you cry. I might not need that.
Let me come over here, so I don't have to-
Want to give this?
Oh.
So I get the pleasure of giving you your personal, uh, plaque here, and again, this is the Troy Thompson Humanitarian Award to Julia in recognition of outstanding contributions by an employee of Marion County who demonstrates tireless energy to help others, shows compassion in a role, is a role model, overcomes adversity, contributes to the betterment of county government, and model excellence in pursuit of our vision. And Julia, your name will go on a plaque along with all of the winners, it's already on the plaque from winners of prior years, and this hangs in the board office, so. And I can't think of anyone that deserves this more than you. You have just been an amazing person to work with, and all of the giving that you've done and helped other people, and, I mean, all the things that were said are just so true. So, thank you so much for all you do.
Do you have any comments? Well, she won't talk, so with that, we'll call this meeting adjourned, and since there are treats, we'll get right to it, so. Thank you all.